Sorry for being just a couple of minutes late. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Weber County Commission meeting for today, May, what is today, May 26, I believe? May 26, the day after Memorial Day. I'm Commissioner Gage-Fror, with me to my left is Commissioner Scott Jenkins, to my right Commissioner Jim Harvey. We are going to have a pledge of allegiance today by Gary Myers, Gary, and invocation by Commissioner Harvey, and I will do the thought of the day followed by public comments. Gary, time's yours.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as we come before Thee and approach Thee at the start of this Weber County Commission meeting, we're grateful, Father in heaven. We're grateful for being here. We know and understand that our being here is because of Thy divine plan. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for especially this last weekend, Decoration Day, where we get to honor those who sacrificed so much, many ultimately, for our freedom. We love freedom. We know that freedom is a divine principle, and we are grateful for it. We're also thankful, Father in heaven, for our parents and our families, who allowed us to have our freedom to be here in this country. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for all those who make so many things possible for us. We pray, Father in heaven, that we, as a people, will respect one another, and do so in kindness and in meekness, but also in strength. We might be able to withhold those or to uphold those principles that are given to the foundation of this country, and we do it, we say these things in the name of the Savior, even Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioners, my thought of the day deals with be safe. Now, it doesn't necessarily deal with the safe that we've talked about over the past couple of months with our COVID-19. It has to do with what started actually yesterday, after, the day after Memorial Day, Decoration Day, which starts the 100 deadliest days on our roads. And this is something that we need to recognize, that the people that we lose the next 100 days, on average, we lose one a day, if you look over the past 10 years, which is way too many. UDOT's goal is obviously zero fatalities, and if we do one a day, it's not gonna, not gonna get us anywhere close to that by any means. And so why do we see the deadly crashes? What causes this? You know, I had an experience just this last week as I was coming down Ogden Canyon, and I was going the posted speed limit, maybe a few miles above, maybe 40, not 35, and I had a car that had tailgated me the entire way down. And I got to the mouth of the canyon, that car pulled around me going probably 60 or 65, came within two feet of doing a head-on as somebody was coming up 12th Street, and went between me and the other car, made a left-hand turn, went down Valley Drive. And the interesting part is I just took my time getting down Valley Drive to the intersection of 20th and Harrison, and guess what? He was parked there. Probably been there for two or three minutes, maybe longer. So sometimes speed doesn't pay, and we need to realize that fatal crashes are 45% higher during these next 100 days. So what causes these? Obviously, speed, number one. We see a lot of people now that are getting out with some freedom, that are getting out of their homes. We experienced that yesterday, I experienced that yesterday, coming back from St. George, where it was bumper-to-bumper traffic between Nephi and Spanish Fork. There's a lot of people on the road. I think people are anxious to get out, obviously, they're anxious to get out in the warmer months, but they need to slow down, they need to make sure they don't drive impaired, and they need to get off the road if they get drowsy. So those are the three causes, primary causes of these fatalities. So Commissioners, I would just hope that people take this seriously. Speed does kill. I had a father of a friend of mine, that, a good family friend, that was killed a week ago on Trapper's Loop Road on his motorcycle. If you go up there today, you can see where he drove off the road on a curve that took him up the hillside, he was on his Harley, killed him. So there's no question, I've been down that and I've gone through that curve hundreds of times on my Harley, and you've got to slow down. If you take that at 65 or 70 miles an hour, you're gonna go off, you're gonna go off the road. So let's just be cautious out there, let's take this next 100 days, let's make sure that we save lives. Remember that life you save may be your own. So that's my thought, Commissioners, let's be safe. With that, let's go to public comment. I had a request. Ralph, you want to come forward? Welcome, Ralph.
How are you guys?
We're doing great, thank you.
I just want to...
Pull that microphone close to you.
Ralph Price, 636-63. One of the things I'd like to address is this, is that here during this COVID-19, we're looking at a lot of funding that's been able to be given so that people might be able to have a chance, to be able to go ahead and stabilize their homes and stabilize their places with their families and stuff. One of the things that you guys know, that I'm always on you about and everything, is the homeless, and the people that, with diverse situations. I want you to address the issue that during this time, the $1,200 that's being given out to citizens of America, there's a lot of people that are homeless, and people that are, that have addresses. I must have been asked by over 300 people if I would be the person to give them my, they let them use my mailbox, so they'll be able to receive their checks, and checks are gonna be coming, starting here in June in this, and going to be coming out. There's a lot of people out here that don't have addresses and stuff like this, because they're taking advantage of wonderful places like the Lantern House and different places that have opportunity to work with them during their time of problems here. One of the things that I'm seeing though, too, is that a lot of the aspirations that are coming from people that have these diverse situations and dealing with, are looking at this as a windfall and misconstrued revenue of financial security, which it is not. As a matter of fact, it could be one of the most damaging things to them if we don't help and look to guide them right and give them information to be able to get their awareness that this money is a one-time-shot thing that is coming at you. It's not guaranteed we're gonna have a second one, hopefully we do, hopefully we do, but it's a practice run right for us, if they do have a second or third one coming, that we could be addressing right now, that to be able to get some education out to the people that have this windfall coming their ways. Now, there's been, I've had a chance to deal with probably 150 people that are, had bank accounts because they had social security. At social security, they're sending the checks to the ones that had the social security, and there's so many of them that they have not one cent of that money left after one week. And there's so many of them that have gone out and bought cars and stuff like this, that they got payments that's gonna come due, not this next month, but the following month, and they have to have gas for them to get through there. Those cars are gonna be repossessed, and then it's going to be, that's, well, the justification is that, oh, I got some place, and when winter comes, that I'll be able to go ahead and I'll be able to have a roof over my head, because I got my car. And that's, they're not gonna have the car by the time, we've got another three to four months, and they become delinquent on those payments, because one of the things we need to realize is that a lot of people here, have, all the people here, myself included, we have homes, we have apartments, we have places that are residence, so we look to accentuate whatever's happening in our life and target that money so that it is equitably spread and we can continue on. People that have these blessings like this come them to their way, and they see a chance to be able to have an 800, a 1,200, or even a $3,500 car, where they've got payment plan on this, because they're willing to accept it right now, because there's been such an impact on the businesses and on the car dealerships and on the different places, that they're letting people buy individual stuff and enter into that ratio of debt that they're not gonna be able to handle. We are looking right now that, that it's been a good two, two, three weeks that some of them have had, and they've got a vehicle to drive around in, and that first tank of gas they got is they draw it off the lot, or those gas, the amenities of having a car to be able to get around and do stuff, and the road to be open enough that they can get around and do things, that, you know, there's a feeling of enthusiasm and stuff that's going through them, and they're not looking at the long term, they're not looking at the, what's going to happen in the future, that there is a car payment. Or if those people that bought an 800 or a $1,000 car, what, about three, four months from now, what if car trouble comes? What if the transmission goes? What if the block goes or something like this? And boom, that's another problem that we're having. One of the things I ask for help in is that some way we can, as a county, not just a city, and the reason I bring it to you guys first, because you guys are amazing, I want to thank you. You have made my job easier, and that's to be responsible and be a voice for the people that I'm talking about. Because you guys jumped on board and were right there and put your John Henrys down and led the way, so I could go ahead and look to have more people access to, like the Lantern House and the food banks and stuff that are around. It's on a scale now that it's disproportionate for what's going, what we're having to deal with at these places, because here we have Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City, Utah County, they've all had telethons to be able to try to raise funds, to be able to deal with the extreme amount of increase that has happened. I'd like to see Weber County have some kind of telethon, not just a area food drive, not just a, in the back of a truck, North Auto, and I applaud them for what they did this last couple of days and tried to bring in what they did, but I'd like to see us put together a telethon for Weber County, so we can go ahead and be responsive as Salt Lake City and Salt Lake County and Utah County has done, and the influx of funds and things that are necessary to be able to sustain and to be able to deal with the increase level that has happened would be good. One of the things I also want to address is...
Ralph, do you want to wrap up here? I gave you an extra couple of minutes to pass that now.
Yes, one of the other things I want to address, and this is personal, is because I had a chance to be the witness, I was coming down 6th Street where I live, and I came to Washington Boulevard, right in front of me, it was like a movie, I saw one car be hit into this one, this car hit into, and come in super speed, and this one slammed into this other one. I saw this whole accident happen, and this, and... First, you guys know I have a concern for everything that happens in Weber County, Ogden City. I came out and went out to the road and pushed cars over Washington Boulevard from the closest lane, so they moved those last two lanes to get past 7th and Washington. I called them, waited, because the lady right next to me called for the cops to come and get to the wreck that was on, just past 7th and Washington. I was the first one to see everything right in front of me, because I was looking at Washington here to go to Cross, to go to Maverick. Well, when the cop got there, the first one that got there was the sergeant, and sergeant, he walked right past the wreck, he walked right past the individuals who had run out of their walkover thing, and came to me, where I was pushing these cars over so it wouldn't hit and cause any more problems, and start scolding me, and start telling me that I was going to be a problem, because I was sitting in this chair and doing my civic duty like anybody else did. Others that were at Pet Boys, others that were at other shops, jumped out Enterprise, they jumped out, and they start doing the same thing on the other side, we secured the thing so somebody could get there. Soon as the officer got there, he got him straight to me and start b-reating me, and start getting down on me, and start, because I was in this wheelchair. I can stand up, I'm on one-leg balance, and God, I didn't think I needed to do that, to be able to direct people around, and they just made secure this scene. Just because I'm in that chair doesn't make me less of a person, doesn't make me less of an individual, doesn't make me less responsible to do my civic duty to Ogden City or anything else. I do it from this chair because I'm trying to work on stabilizing this leg, rock thing, I'm gonna be able to walk out there.
Ralph, we're done.
I want people with handicaps to be able to do it like that, that's all I want to say.
Okay, Ralph, appreciate that, we're done now, thank you.
It needs to be addressed, that we have rights to, and we have responsibilities to. Just because we have a candidate doesn't preclude us from being citizens.
Thanks, Ralph. Any additional comments from the public? Let me just remind those that may be listening on the internet, online, that this is a Zoom meeting. If you want to go to the Weber County site, pull up the agenda, we'll give you the meeting ID along with the password. If you're on that Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand for a chat. I believe Shelley's also monitoring that, or Stacy. I don't believe we have any comments, do we? Are you aware of, Kristy?
Not aware, no.
Okay, thank you. Let's move now to our consent items, Commissioners. Let's go to requests for approval of warrants, 2766 through 2779, and 449637 through 449835, in the amount of $1,559,366.48. Two, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $103,955.20. Three, requests for approval of minutes for the meeting held on May 19, 2020. Four, requests from Human Resources for approval to surplus a filing cabinet. Five, requests for the Elections Department for approval to surplus office equipment. Six, requests from the Ogden-Echols Conference Center for approval to surplus china, glassware, and cash registers. And seven, requests for approval of interlocal agreement, cooperation agreement, by and between Weber County Library and the Davis County Library for cooperative borrowing. That's the consentage items. Commissioners, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Jenkins.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment that as you go through the bills today, you notice a ton of RAMP grants in there. These are grants for a tax that was voted on years ago on all of us for recreation arts, museums, and parks. And we, the county distributes those monies once the RAMP Board decides how they're dispersed and who gets those grants. And there's been several times the last couple of months that we've been distributing those, and as you go through here today, you'll see a lot of grants in there, that are RAMP-associated. If people want to know what we do with that money and where it goes, they just need to pay attention to our bills, because they're all noticed that way. And it's really interesting to see all the different parks and recreation and museums that get it, and the art projects around that get this money, and this changes the way the county looks, and the way they get, the smaller cities in our county looks. It helps them build their parks, it helps them fund art projects, it helps them, helps the museums, that's what helps the dinosaur park and the treehouse museum helps fund them. And in the end, I don't know if I voted for this or not, I don't really remember, it's been long enough back, and I'm always critical of these things, but I have to agree, it helps shape the way your community looks and operates. And in this case, I'm really pleased with RAMP and the success that the county and all the communities have because this tax that they've decided to assess.
Agree, couldn't agree more, 100%. Commissioner Harvey?
We come on nearly two decades of that tax. It is the voters, or the ones who chose this, it was on, I remember, I remember that, and it's an eighth of one penny, an eighth of one penny, but look at the huge differences. Now it's millions and millions of dollars that is, now they, people can benefit, not just, but everyone, whether they live here or whether they come from another community, they get to enjoy, I know we did some great things with adding on to some ADA grants that we had, to help people in wheelchairs and doing other things. And then I also, I also, on this one, want to compliment our library team, the last item. We do an interlocal between Weber County Library System and the Davis County Library System, where they share books, they share resources back and forth. I think we share probably four times what they share back. If you have a library card in Davis County, you can come here and participate or vice versa, but we have a, we have a wonderful, especially from the size of our county, a wonderful collection of resources at our libraries, and safely they're operating today. We had close to 18,000 visitors last week, all spaced appropriately. That's moving a lot of people throughout our entire network. We've just done a really, really wonderful job, and that goes along with the staff, so just wanted to make that comment before we hear from Ricky.
Thank you, and most, the majority of the comments I've heard in libraries, I won't say 100%, but a good share, good high percentage, has all been positive about us opening that up, and surprisingly, the volume of people that we've seen go through there, and in safe conditions, even more important. With that, Ricky, let's go to you for information on warrants and POs.
Sounds good, thank you. We issued 13 purchase orders this week for $104,000. 29% of that amount, or $30,000, is for the library, which will go towards purchasing tables for the Ogden Valley Branch, as well as some janitorial supplies. 28% or $29,000 is for the transfer station, and that will maintain road equipment and provide colorant for the compost. 18% or $19,000 is for the Golden Spike Event Center, and that is to purchase buckles for the high school rodeo. And 10% or $10,000 is for property management, which will buy a cargo trailer. We issued 211 checks for $1.6 million. 64% of that amount, or $997,000, are the RAMP awards that Commissioner Jenkins talked about, that went out to about 10 to 12 various entities throughout the county. 8% or $131,000 is for the Weber Housing Authority, and those are the monthly housing payments. And then two items at 6% or a little over $90,000 each, one was for elections, and that is paying for printing and postage for the primary election, and then also employee life insurance and other insurances.
Thank you. Is that all, Ricky?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Commissioners, if not, entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion, we approve the consent items.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Consent agenda has been approved. Let's go to action items.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to ask Commissioner Harvey something.
Go ahead.
So Commissioner, you're over the libraries, this cooperative agreement that we make with Davis County, why do we do that? Do we not have enough books? Do they not have enough books? Do we fill...
There are different, as was explained to the library board. We have enough books, but we don't always share the exact same selection. So what it does is, by sharing this, it actually broadens both county selections of materials. So if you're a Weber County resident, and the county doesn't necessarily particularly have a selection, they may have that selection in Davis County, and then you'd be able to access there, to get, to get that resource there. So instead of having to order it yourself and pay for it, you still have an opportunity. Just because we don't own it, we could borrow that. It's a borrowing system from them, and there's a, there's a give and take, or there's a, it goes back and forth. We do, we do that quite frequently. It's been a good program for, for our patrons, and it also, it's just another way that we're working with multiple counties, like we do with economic development.
Sure, well, I'm not opposed to that, I just, we spend millions on our libraries, and I just wondered if it's really necessary, but I'm not opposed to it, that's fine, I'm glad that they're being creative and do the best they can.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been good. It's been, the patrons love it.
And as I understand it, Commissioner, if you have a Weber County card, you can go to Davis and vice versa, is that correct?
That's what I understand.
Okay, good. Well, I think that's a good system, makes sense. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, let's move now to action items G1, request for approval of an agreement by and between Weber County and Cash Valley Bank, allowing for temporary Weber Center parking on bank property, which would be just across the street from us, south on 24th Street. Mr. Mendoza, you're up.
Yes, gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
You're right, Commissioners, this is another agreement that's related to the parking structure project that we've got going on. And again, this agreement's between Weber County and Cash Valley Bank, that's just across the street here on 24th Street. This agreement allows the county, its employees, other tenants of the Weber Center, access to about 70 parking spaces just across the street, again. This particular agreement will stay in effect through next spring, about March 31st, I believe, of 2021. What's interesting about this particular contract, this agreement, is the bank is not requesting that the county pay anything for this agreement. The bank is only asking that the county provide some regular routine, minor routine maintenance, just to make sure that the parking lot stays clean and safe. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions about this agreement or parking in general?
Questions, Commissioners?
No, but under this, because of the folks at Cash Valley Banks, Mr. Daines has done such a nice job, I'd like to make sure that we bring out, or go on record to say, I'd sure like, sure like to return that in better condition than we found it. There are some low-hanging fruit there right now with a cover off of an arm, even though the arm thing doesn't work, but putting the cover back on, cleaning up some of the weeds or the debris, and just sweeping it up, and, listen, I know we're busy, but I'd love to return that, and even if, even if we have to stripe it, it's not a lot of money for what we're getting out of it. I want them to know we can be as good or better neighbor that they're being to us right now. What a great thing, what a great thing to do. That just helps the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
You know, I agree that Mr. Daines and Cash Valley Bank have gone out of their way, they've been over backwards to help us, and I want to acknowledge that and thank them for that, and with that, I'd make a motion, we approve action item G1.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Commissioners, thank you.
Let's go to G2, consideration action for final approval of Parkside PRUD Phase 2A, consisting of 12 lots. Mr. Burton, you're up.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
Before you, we've got a request for final approval of a subdivision called Parkside Phase 2A, 12 lots. This is part of the Wolf Creek Development, it's a master planned community in what's known as the Bridges PRUD. So this is just the plating of 12 lots, we're talking 5,000 to 6,000 square feet with some common area and some trails around it. This was recommended for final approval by the Ogden Valley Planning Commission on September 24th of last year, and we as staff are recommending that you approve that, based on the conditions and findings outlined in your staff report. There is also a request to approve a subdivision improvement agreement, to make sure that we see the proper installation of subdivision improvements. So it's a, it's a total amount that the developer has put up of $31,146. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Question I have is, you just said September 24th of last year, that was approved by the planning commission?
Yes.
That's eight months to get to us? What happened? What happened?
It's been held off, so, and the developers here, if you have questions for them, it wasn't anything on the county's end. It was, I think, just waiting, they've been installing improvements this whole time.
Okay, so there's nothing we did?
No.
Okay, I just wondered, wow, that's a long time.
Thinking the same thing.
I wanted, Commissioner Harvey? I just want to recognize the chair of the planning commissions in our audience today, Mr. John Lewis. That's all.
Ogden Valley Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken.
What did I say, Upper Valley?
Well, you said Upper Valley, okay, yeah, I'll take. Is, is our planning commission chair also the developer in this particular case or?
That's correct.
Okay, for some reason I thought that. Mr. Lewis, did you have any comments on this or you just want us to prove it?
No, we're thrilled to work with the county.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
I'd make a motion that we approve action item G2, the approval of the Parkside PRUD Phase 2.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have an approval, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to action item 3, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and Epic Engineering PC for SWPPP Inspection Services, ensuring compliance for state regulations. That's not Ashley, welcome.
It's good to be here. Good morning Commissioners.
Good to see you.
I do present this contract for your approval. It is to perform inspection services to meet the state regulations for erosion control and pollution prevention. We've received proposals from different engineering groups and have selected Epic Engineering. These inspections are funded through the permit process and the fees that are paid in that process. Are there any questions?
Questions, Commissioners?
So the question I have is, these are outside of our ability to do the inspections ourself?
It would be additional manpower to go out and do this. We have the capability. We recognize this engineering firm as having expertise and providing an efficiency in performing these services.
So are these services, you said erosion or what, specifically what, what services are they didn't provide? Is it a range of services or?
They're providing the oversight inspections of the SWIP controls on these construction sites.
Okay, got it.
I think, I think, team, I think, did you report back to us, Commissioner, that, is this the one where you said, you know, by the time we did it ourselves and by the time, by the time they did it, boy, there's just really no cost, we thought that we could do cost savings in South and by the time we did everything, it really wasn't any and so that's the conversation I remember, unless I'm off someone.
And this is that contract, yeah. Okay, I just questioned it, no more.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you're ready to accept.
I'm ready to go.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract by and between Weber County and Epic Engineering for the SWIP Inspection Services.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Let's now move to action item 4, request for approval of a right of way contract by and between Weber County and Linda Larkin for the 12th Street Widening Project. Mr. Myers?
Good morning Commissioners. For your consideration today, I have Linda Larkin's right of way contract for your approval today. As you're aware, we have been talking with Linda for quite some time. We were able to come to agreement on this and she was interested in signing the contract. Any questions you might have for me on this?
Questions, Commissioners?
I've personally sat down with Linda Larkin. She's a wonderful person.
Very much.
And I want you to know that what I learned from that conversation, as we, as this is the second to the last piece of property on the 12th Street, 12th Street Project, what a, Gary, I want to compliment you for going above and beyond your position to make sure that some of the promises that she understood were taken care of and you did those personally with a shovel in your hand.
She told you about that, huh?
Well, you know, that doesn't always happen. Sometimes people say things and you think, oh, that'd be nice if somebody did that, but you went out and did it. You didn't just try, you went out and did it. And I, I think that had a lot to do with coming to a positive solution and I recognize that and I also appreciate Jason Allen and his work in getting this done, but I'm glad about this. This is, this represents progress for us and a lot of hard feelings over the years over this particular issue and I think Ms. Larkin, the fact that she's signed and has done this, I know her as one who would not do it if she didn't feel good about it, so I compliment her and you and your team for getting this done. Sean, the rest of you, thank you.
It's been a long time coming. She's a, like you say Commissioner, and I apologize if I interrupted you, we, you know, we kind of had to establish some relationships with Linda and, you know, happy to do it. Linda's a great lady and I'm hoping that we can move forward with the last remaining contract on that one as well.
So we have one left?
One left.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Good, okay. It's good to see the progress being made here.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Question I have is, do you have, have you now made peace with Mr. Johnson, is it Val Johnson?
Who's that? I'm sorry?
On 7500?
Oh, yes. I believe, believe we're actually good. When we were out there last, I was out there with him probably two weeks ago and actually a great salute and compliment to our roads group. They were able to jump on, on some issues that were causing some flooding out there for him and, and were able to fix that and I think we're, I think we're moving, moving forward in the right direction.
Good. I, I went out there and met with him. It was kind of a fluke that we run into each other, but I was walking up and down that road and he pulled up and he said that you'd met and he was, we were working on it, so.
Yeah.
But it hadn't been finished yet, so.
Jim's also a great guy and, you know, we were able to understand how we used things a little bit better after meeting with him and get him taken care of.
You know, I appreciate you doing this Gary, so many of these contracts are A to Z and they're exact and when you, you run into people's properties and the little ways they do it and there are things that you didn't know about, you can't contract and you just kind of have to be a nice guy and finish them and it's not easy to do and I understand that, so I appreciate you doing that.
No problem.
Additional comments?
Questions?
Yeah, Gary, we appreciate it. These are hard contracts, we understand that. It's just interesting that when you deal with these, for some reason, everybody's own property is worth a lot more than their neighbors.
Sure.
I have never figured that out, but there has to be truth to it because it's been going on for a long time, but.
Well, it is, it is, it is a big impact to these folks.
Yeah, it is.
And we, sometimes takes a little more time to show them that we understand that and we respect that.
Good, okay. Ready for a motion, Commissioners?
I'd make a motion, we approve the right of way contract by and between Weber County and Linda Larkin.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Gary, you got a contract. Let's go to action item 5. This would be a request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Marty Simper slash Utah Quarter Horse Association to hold a Quarter Horse Show at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Olson?
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So the next, this, this first contract, I have four or five of the next one.
You're up for a while.
The first one is between us and the Utah Quarter Horse Association. This is for their youth horseshoe circuit as well as a paint show that's coming in this weekend. We, we had to add a day just because of all the precautions that we're taking to make sure that we're, we're keeping people distant, so the show's going to end up going a little bit longer, but to add that safety element as well as a sponsorship to this event, that's what this contract's for.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Just want to bring up, this is another one of those things that people don't understand that's happening right in their backyard. Marty, by the way, his middle name is Oak. Oak, like the tree.
Marty Oak, okay.
Marty Oak Simper and, but he's, he's a trainer. Trains quite a few out that way and out far west way, but he's also a national champion. You don't have a lot of national champion horse trainers in your community, always, but here's a guy that's done it time and time again and very, very proficient in his craft. Calls, lives here in Weber County and, and, boy, this is another, this is a good feather in our cap to have this show, so I commend you Duncan for putting this together.
Awesome, we have over 300 stalls already.
There you go.
Wow. So a lot of trainers are coming in and so that, that added timeframe, we just, to be able to, to do it and do it safely, that's, that's what it's here for.
Yeah, that's amazing.
That, I'd make the motion that we approve this contract between Weber County and the Utah Quarter Horse Association to hold these shows.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's know, Duncan, you're still up, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Roper Buildings DBA DM LP Resources for construction of a loping area and connection covering for the riding arena at Golden Spike.
Awesome. This, this one I'm really excited about. A couple of years ago, we decided to start looking at options for covering our loping area just outside of the riding arena. We went out and we got a handful of bids and they were all around a million dollars. We kind of put that to the side thinking that, that it wasn't going to work. Commissioner Jenkins came over when we were looking at the transfer station building, maybe we could use that. We were looking at all these options and the, the guys from Roper Building, they, they came out and they said we can do it and we can do it for a whole lot less. So we went through the procurement process, went out to bid and they won the bid and we're excited to, to finally cover that area. We really have that area usable for five to six months out of the year, if that, depending on weather and being able to cover it and make it look good, we're going to be able to use that year round, so we're really excited about that one.
So Duncan, will this be enclosed or just a shed roof or what will it be?
It'll be open air, but it'll be covered, yep.
Okay, so really takes that area that in bad weather, I've seen people out there, you know, in downpours trying to warm their horses up for these barrel racers and, so this will be a big event for a lot of those people using the side of the arena.
And we'll be able to use it during the winter as well, we'll be able to keep the ground usable, you know, it'll be a little cold, but giving that added space and in this time of social distancing, that's just going to help us be able to, to bring people in, get them warmed up and compete and on their way.
Good.
So Duncan, as you read this contract, there's building one, building two and building three, so there's three buildings on it?
So this is building one and building two. Essentially, they have to build an alleyway that connects to the loping area, so that way they can get in and out of the riding arena. Building three was a part of the bid, but because of the situation and, and money, we really don't need to have that one yet. That's going to be a shop out in the back by the racetrack, but building one and two we, we need and we can, you know, we can turn it around and start using it to make money and, and help us along.
Good. Okay Commissioners, comments, questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the contract by and between Weber County and the folks to erect this Roper Building at the Fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Phase one and two.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to action item 7, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Elite Productions to hold a contestant only jackpot at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Olson, you're still up.
So this one's actually a ratification. As the jackpot started to, to schedule participants last weekend, it started to have too many and so we needed to spread it out onto Friday evening to make sure that we were keeping everybody safe and so we had to discount Friday. Just, just, we didn't feel safe about having that many people. We had the horse races, a softball tournament and the jackpot going on all at the same time and, you know, we were trying to do our best to keep people safe.
Okay, questions? So Duncan, is it, so is this a rodeo, all the events or?
Yeah, so what they've done is they, they take and break it up into segments and so the team ropers come in different segments, they come and compete and then they leave and then the, the bronc come, they compete, they leave, the barrel racers come, they compete and they leave and so really both buildings never really had more than 20 people in them at a time, but the contestants that they were able to funnel throughout the entire day was over a few hundred.
That's great and it's a jackpot format?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the contract by and between the Golden Spike Event Center and Elite Productions for the jackpots.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to action item 8, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Utah State University for a 4H dog show to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center. So we've gone from horses to dogs here Duncan.
Yep. This, this contract is before you because of the youth rates that we, we moved 4H to the youth rates and so it's just in front of you for approval for that reason.
Okay. Any dog lovers here?
I'm one. And then I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract, Weber County and the 4H or USU 4H for, for the 4H dog show.
Thank you, I'm sure the dogs love you too Commissioner. We have a second.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to action item 9, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Broken Heart Rodeo Company to hold the Kickin' Corona High School Invitational Rodeo at the Golden Spike Event Center. This sounds interesting Duncan.
So this, this one's our own. A few, about a month ago, when we started to unveil our plans on, on reopening and, and seeing how we could, we could do these jackpot rodeos throughout an extended period of time, we started getting a lot of questions from parents because they canceled the entire spring season in the state of Utah. And so a lot of those kids, those seniors, those kids that, that are, you know, working their horses and getting ready, they didn't have anywhere to compete and so we started thinking, well, we, we did the Icebreaker Rodeo, that's in our wheelhouse, let's have another rodeo and give these kids one more chance to compete. Since then, the state finals has come back on, they are having it down in St. George, but we still had a lot of interest regionally. Right now, we have kids from Arizona, California, Colorado, Montana, Nevada, Idaho, Iowa, Oregon and Wyoming, as well as Utah, that have already signed up and are ready to compete because they didn't get to compete all spring. And so this, this is similar to our Icebreaker contract where we, you know, we obviously don't have the, the stock to do it ourselves and so it's with our stock contractor, but we're hoping that we can have just as successful of a rodeo and we're trying to get rid of that Corona.
That's great. What's the date on this?
This is the June 20, let's see, sorry, I got to make sure I don't tell you wrong. June 23rd through the 27th.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Question I have Duncan is, do you have spectators at this rodeo?
Right now, we're not planning on it. As stuff starts to ease open, we'll see what, what can happen. Obviously, these are kids and so they'll have an essential helper, but if we go throughout the next month and things are safe, we'd, I'd love to have, you know, Grandma and Grandpa be able to come and watch safely, but the, the nice thing is, is we have three arenas and so we can spread it out throughout those three and give people a safe spot to watch, but we'll, we're kind of playing that one close to the vest right now.
Good. Okay. Additional questions?
No, but I want to comment just quickly here, you know, we've done, throughout the decades now, plural, we've tried to get the state high school championships. In fact, we've put in the best bid, but there's some magic sauce that Weber City has up there with, with that committee and I don't know what that is and I wouldn't make any mention that something's, but for some reason, we don't have the, whatever it takes and so they're putting this rodeo on and this has the potentiality of being, you know, we already we already have the biggest high school rodeo. We support our kids, and in the Western culture, bigger, better than anybody. We have the biggest rodeo in the state to prove it. This could be bigger than that. So we'll start the high school season with the Icebreaker, and we'll end the high school season with this Western Rodeo Championship, or whatever this...
Yeah, it'll evolve for sure. The name.
Great for tourism.
Great for tourism for us.
This is good. Awesome. What'd you tell me, three other states to work?
No, there's several states. Yeah. And last, the Icebreaker, I think it brought in 350, 370,000 as far as the economic impact, just for those four days. So we're hoping to make a similar blip this time around.
And, you know, with those groups, they can bring the rodeo here or take them away whenever they want. With these produced events that we do here, they can't do that. That's because it's our event, and so it'll always stay here and always bring that economic impact here. No danger losing it. It's a good way to do business. I'm all for it.
Yeah, I like what you're doing out there, Duncan. I mean, the Golden Spike Arena, I mean, we see right here with these four agenda items of the horse people out there that have a need for a top-notch facility. We saw recently where Davis County is actually changing their facility to the frustration of a lot of horse people out there. So my thoughts are, we'll take all the horse people we've got. Let's use them.
You're not kidding.
Yeah, we'll take all those events.
Let's take, and it looks to me like we're going to get quite a few more from Davis County, which is great. You know, Weber County's always been horse-friendly, and we need to continue to be that way. So, great job.
Awesome.
Comments? Questions, Commissioners? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second. Thank you. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Duncan.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Let's move now to, I don't see any additional action items, so let's move to Commissioner comments.
Ms. Forre, Commissioner Forre?
Yes.
Chair. I'd like to make a comment. Melissa Freegang emailed me, Ralph, just after you were done. She says, "For your information, we're working with the state via teams to go directly to the shelters to help with taxes and to get stimulus checks to folks that are eligible." She says, "We are also working with Youth Futures and the street outreach to deliver mail." Anyway, she just says that you wanted to know that we are on top of it. And I'm not saying we're on top of 100%, but we are on top of it, and we're making good strides there. So, anyway...
Good to know.
It is good to know. You know, good things are happening, and it's a weird time to be doing business right now. Not only our personal businesses, but the county's business. And we're doing the best we can, and we're doing good. We're doing really good, in fact. So I'm very pleased with Melissa Freegang and her group, the Center of Excellence. They're doing a really good job, and we just got to keep pushing.
Just keep working ahead, yeah.
That's right. Just keep pushing ahead.
A lot of moving parts in this county right now. All seem to be on all eight cylinders, working very well. Commissioner Harvey?
No comments. Glad to be back with you again. Glad you're both safe.
It's good to be here after, on that freeway. So let me just, you know, as we go through the spring months, and we've had kind of, at least in the Ogden Upper Valley, we've had a cool, dry spring compared to the last couple of years. We're now going to enter a hot, hopefully not too dry, starting the end of this week. So as I listened to the weather report last night, and the water report, and Commissioner Jenkins can probably inform us, it appears our reservoirs are in pretty good shape right now, Weber Basin. But if this trend continues, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we need to try to keep this water, these water levels high. I remember the years where we've used, we draw those reservoirs down, then we depend on the snowpack. Sometimes we don't get, or we're going to be in a drought again.
That is true. In northern Utah, we're fortunate. Our water situation is very good. Our reservoirs will fill within, you know, inches of the top, and so it's really good. But, you know, I was listening yesterday, you know, I copied that county seat that's on TV, and they were talking with the folks down in the Sevier Valley, and the ones up in Ridgefield and other areas down there, where they have taken so much, well, they said that they have 28, they have allocated 28,000 acre feet for use down there, and they really only store 20,000. So they've over allocated that water, what do you call it, aquifer?
Aquifer.
By 8,000 acre feet. And what ends up happening, and you and I have seen pictures of it, because they've made presentations when we was on that water commission, where the valley floor has literally sunk four or five feet. You'll go out there, and the whole section of the valley floor will drop four or five feet. And that's because there's no water there to support that ground, and it has sunk into the aquifer. So they talked about the recharge projects that they're doing, gravel pits in different areas, and so years like this year, and down there, they really had a good winter. They're at over 200% of average fall, rainfall and snowfall. So they're having a banner year this year, and they have eight water projects where they're trying to recharge that aquifer. They had the county, or the state engineer there, Kent Jones, and they were talking about it. It becomes very complicated, this water. And people just don't understand until they get into it, the amount of time and effort and science that goes into trying to determine how much water's in the aquifer, how old it is, and how much are you allowed to take out. And so many times you think, well, it's there, we ought to be able to take it. Well, you don't realize what the results will be. And like I say, you go along there, and all of a sudden, the road just comes to an end, and there's a three or four-foot wall to where it started, and it's like, are you kidding me? That's dropped that amount? And it's, and then once you lose it, once it drops like that, you can't recharge it and lift it. It's just gone. That's capacity that no longer exists in the aquifer. So there's a good reason to want to protect it. And it's interesting, it's interesting science to be involved with this, and not only the science, the law. Water law is as complicated as any law there is. And Gage and I, when we were on this water commission down there, about half the guys there were attorneys. And to sit and listen to them talk about water law, and what you can do, and what you can't do, and who has what's rights, and what rights precede other rights, because on these dams, you have original water rights, and those are the ones that were there before the dam existed. And then the water rights are, they're layered in there. And as the dam goes down, your water right goes away, because there's no water left. The amount you had is gone. And it's just really interesting to get into water law and see how it works. It's very complicated, and it's darn important law. When you look at water law in the east, in the Midwest, well, most of that is, it's just water that falls. They have very few dams back there, and many of the rivers, they can pump off of, but many they can't. And so their law back there is different than our law here. Our law here is a first-right law, and theirs isn't. And it's just really different, the way the two laws operate. And so it's interesting to watch it out here. And Utah, being one of the first states around here to be settled, our water law pretty much set up the water law for the entire Intermountain area. So it's just, it's fun to be involved with it. It's really an interesting thing.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Yeah, it is, and you're absolutely right, try to get to the bottom of some of the law, plus just the science behind it. It's above my head, I can tell you that. With that, I'd entertain a final motion.
Can I add one more thing, just real quick, to let the public know? Commissioner, maybe give an update, just a quick update on our parking terrace, so the public knows, or why Shaun's here, just to let them know why the parking terrace is closed. It's not that Weber County Building's closed, but maybe just an update?
Well, yes. So the water, or the parking terrace, when we had the...
Earthquake.
Earthquake. You could actually feel, we had people in their offices in the bottom of that, and they could feel that thing groan. It just said, "Oh, tear me down." And we have been looking at tearing it down for a long time. It's been condemned, and it's partially used, and, well, anyway, when that happened, we decided that that was our wake-up call to be done with it. And so since that, time has not been used. We've been out at RFPs to get bids to tear it down. They were analyzed, and there was one awarded about 10 days ago, and that will be for us right of way for approval. So we will approve it, and that will, it's going to actually start, well, the preliminaries actually has started. If you've noticed recently, they've been around taking loose things off of it and cleaning it up. Today, they're drilling on the east edge of it to get samples of the dirt for the dirt nails that are going to go in and hold the wall up, the retention wall up, to make sure everything's okay to do that. And so I would imagine another four or five days, you'll see job trailers out there, and sometime next week, you'll actually see crews on the grounds, starting to build things inside to start taking this down. It's interesting, when you look at how they're going to take it down. One talked about taking it down by floor, another one talked about taking it down from one end to the other end, and there's different ways they have of doing it. But anyway, these folks won the bid, CTI, I think it was called, and they're going to start taking that down. And by the time they take it down and shore it up and do new asphalt for parking, because it could be a surface structure then, their bid will take us into October.
And just to point out, just to add if I could, that parking structure, for those who have been around Ogden for a while, know that that parking structure is more than 50 years old and was 20 years past its useful life. It's been costing us a lot, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year annually to maintain it. And so with the earthquake, that just kind of was the final, was the final straw.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there's no question, this is not a new issue. It's been discussed for as long as I can remember, plus before that, after we had the earthquake and working with our legal team and looking at the potential liability that the county would have for both employees and members of the public, we made the decision, and I feel comfortable that we made the right decision, that now's the time to get this down. Where we go from here is still up for debate and discussion, but at least we know that the members of the public and our employees here at Weber County won't be in harm's way with using that parking structure. So I think that was the right decision.
Well, and it might be mentioned, just so the public knows, we've anticipated this, so the money was put away to do it, and there will be no bonding. This will be a cash deal, and that goes to speak to our budgeting and those who've[1779.12]